Trying to put some stuff in the book for you. Many of these items, I'm going to take a mention and then we can move on. One of them that's going to take more than a mention is the first item. Parks and Recreation Committee has asked, we have Robert Keller come in, talk a little bit about some ideas that have been discussed on doors swinging in the park. And then also put the playground equipment on there as a something that if y'all want to continue that, it's in your package, all the quotes. And Robert, just to let you know, I shared with council everything that you gave us the other day. Okay? All right. Come on up here.
I brought some more pictures, more of our stuff. Share.
Your Honor, can we?
Yeah. This is just an overhead picture here, guys, that you've seen before. And of course, the topo map underneath here. Lonnie, I've got one for you as well, if you want to see one.
Topos, man, somebody knows those topos.
Oops. Got two of them there. Ann and John had asked if I would take a look at the doors swinging in the park. In my background, you know, from a conservation standpoint, this is what I did. And they said, what can, how can you do this? What do you think of this? I remember the background on this. I remember it being called a pejorative name, that there was something about this, that it was something less than honorable, it was dangerous or something. And so, of course, I do what I usually do, I talk to Dan for a while, I talk to Phil Andrum. And of course, as it turns out, it looks to me like there's nothing bad about the park, that it's, and per Dan, it was that the park needed a little bit of attention in regards to saying, "We are here." So one of the things that I've suggested to Ann and John, and then of course to Jim as well, is that we've got a birding sanctuary park, very similar to this down at Dolphin Island, Alabama. When birds come across from South America, they come across the Gulf of Mexico, and the first piece of land that they hit is this little strip of land. And they've got about 150 acre bird sanctuary there. And one of the things that I would like to, that I'm making the suggestion, that you guys think about having this as a passive birding park. One of the things they do down at Dolphin Island is that they close the park at dusk, and then they open it back up in the morning. I think that that perception of this park being unsafe or something like that could be taken care of in two very simple maneuvers. One would be having a gate put here, and then getting it put here. The ones I'm pointing to, guys, are the entrance there off of, what is that, Number Ridge? And this is Hood Roamer, or whatever this is. And one of the things that we've done there at the Atlantic Coast Conservancy, we get X amount of dollars every year that we've been directing towards the community. We've not really directed any towards the city yet. And one of the things I told the folks is that I would be more than happy to provide these two gates. Gates cost about $2,500. But I think having a gate on this property, and it doesn't mean the park's closed at dusk, it just means you can't drive in there. And if I were a kid, I'd be in there, and I'd probably be smoking or something and hanging out, because that's what kids do. And I'm sure that I did it when I was there, too. I think that if you keep the people from being in there at night with vehicles, I think that that would give more of a safety appearance, opening up in the morning to people to come in there. One of the things that I noticed about the property, the trails are really in good shape. You've got a lot of heterogeneity in there, in terms of habitat. You've got a mature oak hickory forest, but in several places, you've got open areas. One of the things you like to see in a birding preserve is different types of habitat, because different animals, different organisms will use this different habitat. You've got everything in place to do this. Burning parks are usually very passive in nature. You have some interpretive signage that says, "This is what you might expect," or it says something about ecosystem restoration, where this could be a burn habitat, or it could be an open area where you could put butterfly bush in there. But I think very, very easily, you could give this that appearance of, "We are maintaining this," with a gate, with some interpretive signage. And Your Honor, you and I talked about this a long time ago, in regards to what we're talking about, the marble trail, where we wanted to do that trail along the railroad track. And of course, that railroad track does go through there. One of the things that I thought, and this goes back to something I saw on the Masters Golf Tournament, where they said something about that the reason the sand, and the sand perhaps is so white, it's not sand, it's ground up marble. And I thought, what we could do is use the marble aggregate, or the offal of the marble, to use that as our sand, and potentially put a surface in there. This area down here, and you can see on the topo map, that it's a little bit steeper there. You will fall down there, but other than that, it looks like the property is quite even, and the trails are wide, with just a little bit of lanes there, I think that you can make it a very walkable park. When we were down there, there was a woman with her two kids, and I said, "What do you think about the park?" And she said, "This is great. I can have my kids untethered, turn on boots, and they can go out there, and they can run, and they can have fun." And I said, "Well, what do you think would add to your experience?" And she said, "A playground." And I do think that, and this is one of the things we've seen, too, that playgrounds, themed playgrounds for the age five to 12, really go over well in something like this. And having a theme of birdhouses, and what I envision would be something along the lines of like small tree houses that look like a birdhouse, that the kids could go via suspension bridge from one to the other. But they also have themed playgrounds. And I know that, is it the Optimist, or someone is doing the music theme?
Brother.
Brother is doing the music theme. And they do natural resources themes, where it would be almost like a concrete cast of a bird, or something that goes along with the playground. I think that the taxpayers have paid enough. I think that we should be able to go to the community for a very well-defined ask and say, "We have two gates we'd want to put in, that's $5,000. Let's go and ask for $5,000. We've got habitat, where we need $2,500 for butterfly bush, or something like that. Or we've got a playground here that would be $75,000." I think that we should be able to not only go to the community for a very specific ask, but to go to Home Depot, to go to some of the local entities. They're screaming for opportunities, but they really like it, as opposed to the nebulous, "We need half a million dollars to do this park." I think they'd be much more happy to say, "I like that piece." And you do it in a stepwise fashion. This time, we do the gates, next time, we do the butterfly bushes, the next time, we do the playground. And that's, in my organization, we get probably about $150,000 a year that we're directing for, for uniform and whatever. But this is right in my wheelhouse. And especially, and John, one of the things we've always talked about is, what is it that's so special about Jasper? And I think everybody's, it's pretty up here. We've got habitat, we don't have, you know, we're not like Chattanooga, we don't have a waterfront, but it's pretty up here. I think we should put our ecological foot forward in regards to passive birding parks, or something of that, where there's not a lot of maintenance there, they can't tear it up, and birding is trending. I think that down at Dolphin Island, they have such an influx of people when the birds come across there. And one of the cool things about that, we're protecting habitat down there, and the Mobile Bay Basin starts here in Pickens County, and runs all the way down through Alabama to Mobile Bay. That would give us a theme where we could say, "We're protecting it on both ends." And that gives me all the buy-in that I need, and we can direct funds towards this.
So, would that come as a recommendation from the Parks and Recreation Committee?
Yes.
We will have that on the agenda. And I think, I don't know that a presentation would be necessary.
I'd be more than happy to. I think it's always nice to have pretty pictures of whatever it is with the themes, and with some of the interpretive signage that we feel like would be appropriate out there.
What acres is that, Park 65 or something like that?
It's a big one.
It's closer to 80, better than 80.
It's huge. And it's well-camped. There was not a lot of trash out there. They do have, you know, it would be kind of nice if you had, and this was a suggestion I made to Ann and John as well, on the Appalachian Trail, they have moldering privies, to where it's an outhouse, but you could throw wood chips in there. Not that that would be your primary facility, but it would be nice if you could have something like that to demonstrate, and say, "This, we're protecting water quality, and this is the way we do it."
We actually have a sewer on the property, so it'd be easier, deeper into it, it actually comes from Arbor Hill across the property. So we could actually sewer the bottom end, we could actually septic, which we've talked about years ago, but we never did.
Oh, whose is that place right there?
That is the...
The Hope House. The Hope House, okay. We weren't sure we signed that parcel was included.
It was, it was an effort to assist the orphaned children, or children needing assistance 20 years ago.
Was that building actually in the outline of the park, is that?
That building, yes. It was, at that particular time, it was a much more given time, I guess, and we were approached to accommodate the Hope House at that time.
Really, that changed because regulations, laws changed about how state, city funds could be spent, if I remember correctly. We even had to...
We didn't. This was mainly a private sector investment. We just provided the land for it. It's still city property, as long as it's used as the Hope House, it will be city property. Once it ceases to be the Hope House, it would become city property. We did not give it, we just...
And if you look at this, you look at the points of access here, and I don't know that unauthorized access is a problem per se, I'm sure some people probably have...
We've had issues with people driving through there, but mainly during snow events and whatever. But more often than not, they, people adhere to no vehicles. I've chased a couple through there over the years.
But there's, you know, I think with two gates, you would probably control a lot. The only other one is like, yeah, you've got an access down here, but I think you could actually do that with stones, you know, get some large stones, because there is a ditch here, and a ditch here, if you were to cover up the access point, I think that if the children were given, if indeed unauthorized access was a problem.
The park, and you touched on it with the lady that you met there, was not built to be a Jasper City Park, or Lenee Park. It was built exactly what it is. We spent $100,000 of federal money to open the roads. There was no money for outbuildings, which we talked about a few years ago, we were going to build restrooms, and we spent the money in other directions at that time. But it's exactly, well, except for where we did some work to get dirt recently, I think it needs to be corrected there. But everything else is three point something miles of road. That, the danger of it is that it's excluded, or it's wilderness. And it's something that I thought was the neat part about it, that in Jasper, Georgia, that we had 80 acres that you could actually go and get away from everybody you want to get away from. And it's turned out to be a dirty word. People worried about danger? Yeah, if you're out by yourself, you could walk down Navajo Trail by yourself and get something happen to you. So you don't need to go there by yourself. Lisa, I've gotten on to her for going out there by herself, walking through that park, because if you, if you, I think it would be recognized as that, because it would be a gray place for a pervert, someone who would want to do harm to someone else, to hide out and wait for some victim to walk through, and probably get away with it. I think we had a murder up toward Alamo Flawed Falls, but you have a lot of parks like that, and that's why they're called nature parks. You got a bad situation.
And very seldom did they actually take advantage of nature parks like you. You would think that people would hang out there, but they're very seldom.
You can go to Unicoi, and you can leave right out of Unicoi Lodge, and get right on a trail, and walk all kinds of mountain trails. And we have this right here in Jasper. That's why I didn't really want the playgrounds and whatever else that would attract people that would just want to swing on a swing set, which we got swing sets. That was something really unique, which we wanted to try to go toward, but it's all about, and I knew it would evolve into something different, but that's what we anticipated, and that's what we applied for the grant for, for nature trails.
What was that privy you were talking about?
It's called a moldering privy. It's basically an outhouse or a family that you, that you can move from one section to the next when it gets full, and you throw wood chips in there. They actually are ADA compliant, and everywhere on the Appalachian Trail, even the most remote areas, they have ADA compliant moldering privies. And I think the story to be told there is that it's a good teaching experience. I don't know that, you know, up there, they want you, if you're to terminate, they want you to go out in the woods, but if you're going to defecate, they want you to use those facilities. That would just be more or less a demonstration.
It's been reported by, as we use, but I think we have capabilities of having real backgrounds there. But there wouldn't be a situation where, we actually have ours at Lee Hughton Park, and the city park vandalized from time to time, and you can't stop that. You've just got to correct it when it happens, or you might put a camera up, catch someone, but there's somebody waiting to do it again.
But these would be like tipping an outhouse. You have very little money invested in it, and you know, but once again, to go back to you, I think having that natural park, that's what we ought to take advantage of. Let's more or less shake the pompoms, that we do have these natural parks, because I think more and more, we do see that people want to take a walk in the woods, where they can get away from it. And that woman, and I know sometimes we fall prey to, "Oh, let's do a frisbee golf place, and let's do this, and let's do that." Just this area right here is so flat, that you could put a small playground, you know, just so that...
We were going to do one, and just never got to that position, because it was so excluded. And, but if you start putting playgrounds, you actually might get used. But the deal is, it's something special. A few years ago, we were going to have those warrior dashes and things like this here, and actually, there's parking close by that could be a great attraction for events.
I think let's try to build a birding preserve, and let's see if we can get the people to come up here, because they have been flocking for...
Keep it as natural as possible.
Keep it as natural as possible.
First time we've ever agreed on anything like this.
We agree on everything. And not only that, your area where you move the soil, I think all you do is just move that out and plant it with some type of early succession grass or something, unless have that. It's almost like a food park.
But it's also, you can actually have a little play area, picnic area there as well. So, of course, somebody can stop off and eat and go home.
That's right. And those springboard into photography classes, into bird watching.
Got a lot of potential.
The bike trails, aren't they, aren't they telling that with some birding as well, the ones up north that have just opened?
It wouldn't surprise me. This branch is unusual. They want it peaceful, they want it quiet, you know? And when I go out and hike on the Appalachian Trail, I hate it when people are out there with horses, so everybody gets kind of...
And Dan says that this is not the best biking trail he's ever been on.
That's true.
It's actually too hilly.
And one of the things, and I'm not sure whether John or Ann mentioned it, but you can have compatible usage, like with those trails, and that's a pretty hilly place, but having almost like from Piedmont to sponsor like a hard, healthy trail, where they have little workout stations, you know, where here you do push-ups. But all of those can be covered with interpretive signage, and more or less made indestructible to where, you know, they're not going to be, you know, if you get out there with a two-by-four beetle on those things, pretty much, they're going to be able to. And I think that you should make them that way. Let's make them that, thinking that people don't beat on them.
And garbage cans were never put in there, because if you bring it in, take it out. Otherwise, we'd be maintaining garbage trails. We had talked about putting like little doggy bag things at the head of the trail, so if you got your dog in there, you just take the little baggy trail, and you just pick it up. But you said you towed it out. Because we don't want it to have plastic and stuff everywhere.
And I do wonder if you were to give it that semblance of, "We're monitoring this, if we open at daylight and we close at dusk with a sign on this is this park," I just wonder if maybe it would be used for, John?
Well, we never did, after we dedicated it, we never promoted it. We expected people to know that the sign was there, and stop and use it. We didn't tell everybody how great it was, but it's just nice to walk for an hour and a half out there, and never see anybody. And people do it.
Well, and I'm also opening the farmer's market out at Potts Mountain. You know, we conserve that 1,300 acres, and we are going to open the trail from the farmer's market to the old Potts Family Cemetery, which is a nice little walk, too. And we're going to keep that passive as well, so this might give us an opportunity for some type of, "Come walk the burning trails of Pickens County," or something of that ilk. This is what I enjoy to do.
During the beginning of this process, discussion was to, it still is, the city actually owns property for a staging area on the other side, Arbor Hill side, that you could make the trail all the way to town. And we ran into one or two prop downers that were not accommodating this for right away. Pretty much killed the idea. We probably have the power of condemnation, we just didn't choose to exercise it. Also, from here, you could go to Talking Rock, through the Twin Mountain Lake, and if you stay close to the elevation of that railroad, it would be one great trail.
Well, you remember I came in here with that from Talking Rock to Tate, back in 2013? We've talked to the railway, and from what I understand, the railway is being used more and more now, that there's more commercial traffic on it. And for some reason, they think that people are going to get run over. I don't agree with it. I think rails to trails there, from Talking Rock to Tate, would be an idea of use.
We were going to stay off the railroad right away. Obviously, they didn't want us on the right away, but right next to it, and try to build the low line areas up to as close to as possible to the railroad. And if it had not been for one property owner, one, at the time, Lonnie had pretty much every easement, and I just didn't want to pull the trigger on them and somebody's property to get in their backyard. I wanted them to come along, but it never happened.
Well, thank you for letting me present. We didn't have to come back.
We will, yes, sir. We will discuss this Monday at 6:00.
Okay.
Appreciate you.
I'll be here. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. Oh, I found my glass case, by the way.
Oh, cool. Where was it?
Right where I left it. Under my chair.
All right, also included in the package are our quotes we received on the playground equipment for your information. I don't see any action in it right now, but...
Give us some ideas for the budget.
Give your ideas for the budget.
And this is for that property, no? This for...
It's for anything.
Okay.
So we're looking at something like this on Facebook.
You know, we had a guy here in town that built rail trails like this, and he still shot himself. He did them all over the mountainside.
And we could talk one time, John and I, we talked about even trying to figure out a place to put a dog park, you know, because there's lots of people that want...
Oh, I hear it every week. Dogs are...
Dogs and...
Dogs are balled out. There were discussions, I think we discussed it, to block out a little section here at the Roman Company sign, and acreage that you can have a dog park. But there's no signs out there that says, "No animal or dogs." The entire thing is a human dog, whatever park possible. You could even ride a bicycle out there, as long as you don't run over Aunt May, so...
And I don't think we want to prohibit dogs.
It's just a great place, nature.
Just where you let them run loose, is that what the theory is?
No, you got to...
We want people to roam there.
Well, out there is, until it gets more busy, but we still wouldn't get, I think, if you got a leash, but you're talking about an area where you just turn one loose instead of using the ball fields. And we've actually had to ask people to get off the ball field before.
Run them off.
Do you want to stay there?
Run them slightly.
I'd like that, same too.
And the thing is, too, what we talked about is trying to stay away from all of like the wood type signs. Those, three years, you'll be replaced, and get something that's going to be durable. So, might cost a little bit more, but a lot of...
How many miles is the truck used, sir?
A little bit, three.
Well, they use them in the natural parks, and they last for 20 or 30 years. There's a guy here that places wooden signs, too. Can't remember his name now, but they last a long time. Richard, Richard Hurricott. And it's probably the same blast, and they like to do the workout stations. Johnny then did the workout stations over there, and the area was not exactly what you call thin. And one reason he got in shape was that he completed the city park, and hit them stations every day. Chinners, pull-ups, setups, whatever the workout was, he did it.
That was done by a kid in the Boy Scout.
Lisa, you wore him some pants.
Deep blue ones.
Would you just say that?
She was a shitblower.
You wore him some pants, that's not good.
Destructo.
I go, why every video?
He's the racing...
No, not really.
It's a black hole.
It's a car. All right, next thing around the package is a quote from Eagle Advantage Solutions. Tanya has let me know about a need to replace the fingerprint scanner in the police department. They're doing a lot of, well, I guess we're doing all of the certification employees.
For the hospital?
And maybe hospital, you didn't mention that, but anyway, $1,548 that would come out of technology fee. This is certainly a legitimate expense for the technology fees, so I will ask for that at Monday night's meeting.
Will we charge for that, once outside people live?
Yeah, it's, I won't say 50.
I think that's a lot, too.
Yeah. So I will have that on the agenda for the council. Next one is a request again from Tanya about a $50 failure to attend fee on no shows at the city court. Getting to be more and more of a problem. She's telling me some of them charge up to $100, and I think we want to make this a deterrent, not a, I'm not trying to trouble somebody, but a $50 fee, I think, is reasonable, and I will ask for a compliment on that.
Would the judge not have the power to charge whatever he chose, with the judge's responsibilities?
Don't know.
Ask him, well, I'll ask James, but it's kind of...
See what the maximum state thing is, too.
You, the $1,000, that'll cut you off in the city court, but anyway, it'd be something that the council would approve, but it'd be fine, but I think the city judge has authority to fine up to a certain amount. Failure to report would be one of them. But that would be something that he might want in our order.
I don't have any written requests, but I have a telephone request from PICA to use Roper property on August 2nd for the cornbread reunion. Say if they made it last year, I'll ask for a vote on that Monday night. Have a writ request in your package from the Chamber of Commerce. Bike ride across Georgia is going to be here on Monday, June 4th. Spending the evening here, leaving early the next morning. The chamber would like to be able to have a wine tasting, allow wine on Main Street on not just the 4th, but also the Saturday, June 2nd. They will be getting permits, all the catering permits and such for this.
That's one of the days they're already on the schedule.
And that's one of the Saturdays that we've already discussed and approved for their wonderful Saturday, or they had a very good name for it. Any questions on that? Also, have some correspondence, Jerry, concerned of the licensing.
Says Saturday Social.
Saturday Social is what they call it. At April council meeting, I believe that Ann and John were, they agreed to look at the downtown lighting plan for this year. The county, I understand, has approved $7,200, whatever it was, for the tree at the lighthouse, I mean, at the Corde, lighthouse. That has been approved. I sent John and Ann a note earlier this month, the cost... The cost of doing the alley lights on between the old Weeks Jewelry building and Wingology would be six thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. That would be at eighteen feet, which Mr. George Marv, uh, George Power, that's tall enough, we wouldn't have to pull it down all the time.
Yeah, sixteen feet is basically clearance on the road, but I always like to have a little bit more because, you know, trucks are known about throwing stuff in the back and have a little overhang. So, that extra two foot is different. And you gotta remember, the eighteen feet is at the sag of the wire, it's not at the where you connect. The sag of the wire is the dangerous part.
Got you. John, I know you talked to the representative from the lighting company and Jack Dunn after the meeting and showed some interest in doing two trees on Main Street. That would be approximately twenty-five hundred dollars each.
The large trees?
Yeah. So, if council approved twelve thousand five hundred dollars for the project, we could, we would be able to do the alley and two trees on Main Street.
Twenty-five hundred apiece?
Twenty-five hundred apiece.
If you, if you check on the budget to make sure that...
Talk to Lisa about using the unrestricted hotel motel tags and...
No, we don't use for nearly anything.
We didn't commit it in the budget?
We committed it to be transferred over to the general fund if needed.
Okay. Nothing assigned.
No.
So, on the, on the alleyway, is that just one strand or is it just...
No.
Is that a photo on here?
I think photo probably from a prior meeting. But it, I'm gonna say there's probably eight runs from side building to building, so it lit the area pretty well.
And do we have the owners of those buildings, have they signed off on that?
We will get, they will, they will need to. We will need to get the buildings.
Two blocks building.
I don't know today.
You ever heard about the Wigs still in Georgia?
It's not local. Have you heard the Wigs property?
About the Wigs property? I don't know.
And the Wingsology, I didn't realize that had changed hands and into, it hasn't been biased eighteen months or two years.
Oh, but it's still, okay.
Yeah. It's not the guy that had the restaurant there. He's still local, he's red.
The one thing is right there where I had, there's a power source, the city's got a meter right there on their side. So, it's one of the better places in town that we can do it. If we can, like you said, get some permission, like that, we can see us have a waiver, you know, hold arms. Because anything can't...
Anytime we do something to someone's building, we've got to have the permission. We just can't hold our way out there, stick a ladder side of the building.
Does that not need to be done before we spend the money? Or agree to spend the money?
I, I think we could make it, make it a budget item and then pull it together, but it depends on council's...
But I'm, I support it, I just want to make sure that we...
Yeah, and we're not gonna get in any liability. We get in there, we don't have permission, and we'll find another way to do it. We can go with the folks or not do the project. This, this is a request to move forward.
What's going on with the rest of town, does anybody know?
The yard's out.
Did they get the yards out?
And likewise, I don't think the owners of the buildings have been consulted. But last time I talked to Jack about it, they had...
He told me he had not talked since he's wrote a law about that.
Right.
Slowed the process down a little bit.
All right.
David?
Yeah.
Your turn. Counselor, we've got a possible delay in, I guess it's beyond possible delay, isn't it, David? It is a delay.
Yes.
In the approval for increasing the water treatment permit. I've asked David to talk to us about that request and the effect of a two-year delay in getting it approved on our wastewater permit.
Yeah, what we're afraid of is, is Georgia EPD has notified us through emergency engineering that they're looking at maybe two years before we will get our water plant increase, possibly longer, that they're gonna see how it goes with the leak detection and possible meter replacement, change our program, whatever we decide to do before they're even gonna consider an increase in our well permit, which is what we have to have to get a water plant permit. It's even harder to get one through surface water. So, we're trying to get our ground water permit increased from one million to one point three million. And they have jumped in and said, we're gonna look at you for two years and see if you're improving, and if you're improving, we'll consider it. If not, then you'll stay where you're at. So, my question to Jim was, are we sure we want to continue down the same road with wastewater plant if we're not gonna get any more water treatment plant? Then why do we want to jump in five million dollars deep into a wastewater plant permit increase when they're not gonna say one way or another whether they're gonna give us a water plant increase? That's, that was my only question, that I want the job to know that, you know, we're sitting in here with a wastewater plant bill to pay and, you know, we don't have any room for any more customers to come out. Today, the water plant was set on one point two six, one point, one million nine hundred twenty-six thousand per day and our permit's two. So, we all see, which that's still the southern county, a hundred fifty thousand right now. And that's still on, we still have, that's our only ace in the hole that was getting it off after that, and it's, we are where we are. So, I just wanted y'all to know, you know, that, because, I mean, those bills are gonna be coming in and without the city able to, like in the past, the mayor was able to pay a lot of the cost with, you know, substantial things coming in, it's gonna be hard to bring substantial things in when you don't have water to bring it in. And we have counted on this over the past couple of years coming in and being done and y'all approved for the engineers to do it. And we have really not heard back from them on this until about two weeks ago. Hey, it may be two years before they even consider you. So, that's, that's a trouble spot.
Is there any appeal? Is there anything we can do to have, to have them reconsider?
Yeah, I mean, we can have a sit-down, I mean, we can invite them up, have a sit-down. Engineer has suggested against it. They said that William Fership is who we have talked to. And that he, along with Adi Oki is the other one's name, through surface water, has said that until we're below twenty, that we'll stay where we are.
So, I feel like I, I think I've missed something, but I, I mean, last time we met, which was, I guess, two months ago, when Ben came up here and everything, it seemed like, I mean, we knew there was, it's gonna take a while, but I don't know that I'm at the speed on our lead rate being higher than what we thought or...
Yeah, that's our wastewater side.
Yeah.
It's, it's still go. It's still...
If we want to put the money into that now before we get to...
And all that I said, you know, we're putting up, what is it, a crate for the car or whatever. Because without the increases, then you're gonna stick citizens with the bill.
Was that chief of funding, was that, how are we gonna do, fund our wastewater?
Chief.
Yeah. So, have we been educated on our increased lead rate? I don't recall.
Yeah, we, we approved a big picture company, I guess that was at the last meeting. There's no, it was starting, it would have been March or...
March. But I didn't know that was, as a consequence of having a higher rate.
At the time, we approved it, we thought that everything, all the permits would be going through. Thankfully, we did approve the leak detection and that will show evidence that we're, we're making headway and increase the chances of being successful in getting a permit.
So, the paperwork we file as part of our routine showed that our rates now over twenty, is that right?
Yeah, we're considerably over that. And hopefully through the leak detection and the guidance through the leak detection, not just the leak detection, but what got, they'll give us the guidance on the meters and stuff too. And so, whether they're jumped, get them out of here and get some more in here, they'll give us the guidance. And then if we follow that guidance, we'll be more out to get what we want, hopefully, through this group. And that's why I don't think really we need to, probably don't really need to meet with them until we've got some kind of a information to give.
For the leak detection.
It's in May. Hopefully, probably toward the end of May is when they'll get here. And maybe it's, yeah, they haven't given us a hard date on where they finish the people that if they find something where they're at that's, you know, grand enough to stay, then they'll stay and help those people get through that situation a week or so. So, they haven't given us a hard date on, we'll be here at this date, but hopefully toward the end of May, first of the new, is when they're gonna come in.
Is there any update on the possibility of tapping into another source that could potentially provide us with...
Well, no, because they won't give, they won't give us the permit to operate the plant any higher either. So, no, that's another possibility.
So, really, there's no point in doing the backside of it before we do the front side?
Well, the, the two go hand in hand and, you know, until you really know a date where you're gonna be let loose on this side...
It's hard to...
Yeah.
Put that kind of...
Like I said, I hate to go down and sit in front of a noun and say, well, we're, you know, expecting to get this out of the leak detection, other than...
Once we get the, the leak detection group here and go through all the avenues they have to, could we reapply?
We can reapply and ask for a face-to-face with the mayor, myself and Jim, and go down there and hopefully be successful.
But at least have a good faith effort. And they can say, look, you're trying to help yourself, and, you know, maybe we get some of these trouble lines that we know that need a place to go and get them replaced.
Yes.
How long is the permit? If we went ahead with the wastewater, the permit lasts for what period?
Here, the water plant or the wastewater?
Wastewater.
Ten years.
So, once we have a permit, as long as we're planning on doing something within ten years.
Yes. And if I remember correctly, we approved, our council approved thirty thousand dollars of engineering. We did not approve any money to accelerate it.
Exactly.
Yeah, so you're probably looking two years before you're getting started, three?
The watershed assessment's been completed, and that would be the main roadblock, mainly just money and iron bend and wood vault.
I thought if somebody's happened to get into a group, every year that they approve a certain amount, chief approves a certain amount, and we weren't gonna be able to get in that group this year.
Somebody, oh, for the funding?
Yeah.
Chief of funding? There needs to be also an application for an Appalachian Regional Commission grant, which would do, probably, probably get more three hundred thousand from them, but it's three hundred thousand.
So, a lot needs to be done to move forward with that. Jim, have you heard anything from Mr. Klein and George Marvel, just even though we might be able to bring more to the table as far as raw water sources? They, they will, they're not gonna take any action now. Don't foresee it in the near future.
So, George Marvel's not as, our Polycor's not as anxious to have?
Not anxious to move on that.
Yeah, that's kind of what my question was, I guess.
Yeah, I think we were in trouble when they started to audit stuff and they got more state people involved, I figured that this would come down the table. Or they would hold you in the hand of the fire on everything, get numbers down, that they would hold up any more increases on us. So, I mean, the plant's designed to do three point two million, already played for, but you can't get it approved to do that. So, that's one thing I want y'all to know was is that the funding or the, as far as any big increases along the line, they're not gonna happen anytime soon. And William used to be one of the best people we dealt with down there, Bill Fership. And they said that he was one of the ones holding. So, he had no this time until, that we, he used the number twenty, but I think personally if we could get, find some leaks and get it to where it was going the other way, we can possibly do that. But I mean, I don't know for sure, that's why I'm gonna let y'all know, you know, upfront, what was going on, Jim did too.
So, that's, this is really for information. I don't see us taking any action, but I did want to have it discussed with the council.
And we've already got them coming in anyway, so...
Yeah. Yeah, leak detection is, is gonna happen.
So, is Ben the best source for me to get more information or are you the best source? I feel like we might have some important decisions and help us really out a lot of information, which you probably figured out by now, I like.
Yes, that's up to you. Come out of the water anytime.
Okay.
Or the wastewater plant. You know, we can sit down and talk about it, or then you and the mayor and Jim can sit down and talk. I mean, it's, you know, that's up to you. I mean, we're, it's something that basically, you know, we found out over the past few years that it's been, it's been trending up.
Yeah.
Been a cap port, been trending up. And we knew that it was something we were gonna have to approach, you know, and we did approach it with the leak detection this year, that y'all approved in the budget. And we were hoping we would get that done. And, you know, in the past, you were able to give them a list of what you were gonna do to lower your unaccounted for. This is what we're gonna do. We're gonna do leak detection, we're gonna do meter replacements, we're gonna do this. And they would work with you to get that, you know, maybe even give you a temporary. We've even had temporary permits before for like a year. We went from like one four seven to one five five, and in that temporary permit, it was to get our unaccounted for down a certain amount, and we would maintain that permit. So, as time goes along, that has changed, or they, apparently they're just not doing that anymore.
So, I was saying, could we lose the wayside too, just because of that?
I don't think we're losing it right now.
Yeah.
We're, we're gonna continue with the, the engineering and permit process, but I don't think we wanna, luckily, we did not spend the extra money to...
Fast track.
Fast track this.
On the water side? On the supply side?
No, that was on wastewater.
Yeah, that was to go from point eight to one point six on the wastewater side was what they were talking about, fast tracking. No, I mean, there hasn't been any money spent on the water side to get this permit. I think he spent, what, eight thousand dollars out of that twenty-six that y'all approved to get the permit?
I can't remember.
It was very minimal amount that's been spent on the water side to get us to this point. But, I mean, with the leak detection, then we'll be able to sit down with them and, and they'll know what we've got going on, is it leak detection? Is it meters or, or what's the problem? And we can solve it.
Go ahead and jump onto other part of our trip today.
We had a problem on the south end, north end of the county the other day. We had a problem on the south end, north end of the county the other day in the Twin Mountain Lake, Old Highway Five area. And we have a, quite a bit of old two-inch line in this area. And we're looking at going in and replacing this line. Eighty-six hundred, eighty-six hundred feet of this line from Appalachian Court to Hyde Road, Hyde Park Road. And these are the prices that we've got. This is a sort of a rough estimate to get on the agenda. And hopefully, we can get at least one more bid, two more bids on these materials to get this. And you'll notice also too, there's a contracted part of a case board on this in the Tocken Rock area. That the city had attempted at one time and wasn't successful and we're gonna try to do it with a directional board machine. And that's the contracted part of the forty-foot, ten-inch case board is fifty-six hundred dollars. And then the other is just material with the city installing the material from Appalachian Court to Hyde Park and also to from Old Highway Five to where the city has presently laid some six-inch line on Old Tocken Rock Road.
Have you talked to the railroad about the boards, the railroad already, getting that permit?
Yeah, Lonnie's getting that straightened out.
I've done spoke with them about it. I've gotta meet with them out there at the site.
It'll be no hurry. Just take...
David mentioned that we had an issue out there one day last week. Most of the day without water. Luckily, it was one of those days where the temperature was not real high, but there is a chicken pipe at the end of the road. And if we lose that water, we've got some submissions for checking out.
Yeah, yeah, and the demand in the area has gotten great enough now to ward and we can give the people fire protection also.
I didn't get to quote, if you got it on one of those places.
Thank you. Let's see what that, that's the other one, water line that you like. It should have three sheets of the, also it shows you where the water lines are traveling and where the border is. Have you got twenty-three ninety? I don't think Jim got it.
I got, I got all three.
Everybody got all three.
It shows more return going Twin Mountain Lake, Old Tocken Rock Road, twenty-three hundred ninety feet of six-inch pipe and the one road over at Old Highway Five. We don't have to do that board this year if we don't have the money. That's the one board that I left out because of the cost of the...
Talking about right here, this one. If you don't have the, that would be a pretty neat one if you had it tied in even to right there, wouldn't it?
Yeah, yeah, it would be. Yeah, I mean, we may have the money, you know, actually to do that. Yeah, it would be great if that six from up here was tied on to that. But the one, you know, doing yours down here actually loops it. There's a reason I done it, you know, because it takes that too and brings it around the Ivy, what is it, Ivy Lane? Ivy Green Lane at the end there, cut right on the Ivy Green, it loops those back together there too. So you would have the two each loop. Yeah, it'd be...
That one, and that one both together would solve your problem. You'd be, you'd be in coming.
Yeah, I agree. But this was, you know, what we got up and we checked with Lisa and she said we had two projects, One O Eight area. Took out both, One O Eight area and Jim and Todd in Charlotte.
Replacing the old, left around water lines and replacing highway line away to Refuge Road water line. Both, we had budgets in for Capitol, I believe, a reconstruction, thirty thousand each.
Taking that sixty thousand dollars and putting to this before, because this has caused us problems for years. Yeah, I've had this on the budget for years and we just haven't been able to get to it, but we'll get started on it immediately this year and get this put in. It's something that really needs to be, but for our present customers, not even considering future customers that we already have deserve better.
So the request council is going to be allowing us to move the budgeted money into this project and we will finish getting quotes and allow us to go with the lowest price within budget of sixty thousand dollars. This is important, we can lose service to an area that we, we can't lose service to.
Yes.
All right, any other questions? Thank you, David. That one will be on the agenda. In your package, you've got a proposal from Carl Benson Institute to manage the search for city manager position. I think I'm going to have it out to all of you before. There is an option to have them facilitate the interviews. It would be an additional fifteen hundred dollars, but for the price of nine thousand four hundred eighty-seven dollars and fifty cents, they would manage the selection of city manager. They would advertise it, do an evaluation of all applicants, provide the city with a list of applicants and rate them as need to interview, possible interview and no interview. It would be council's final option to accept their information. We could interview any of them, but we wanted to or none of them. But I think it is a good idea. They would, they suggest it could take three months to do it. Any, any, any ideas, any comments?
Fifteen hundred per day?
Yes, per day.
Any days do we anticipate?
You know, I would, I would suggest that we aim at having five candidates for initial interviews. And that could be done in one day. And I think any secondary interviews we could do without, we can manage that ourselves. Any questions, probably? I don't, I don't have a copy of the, maybe I'm looking the wrong place. Did you give me a copy of the proposal?
It's passed all out.
Yeah. This is three. That's Robert's.
Oh, okay, that's good. So, you know, they would interview us first?
Yes, they would also interview mayor and council, getting an idea of what your wishes are in the city manager. I'm just looking for the, now there it is, nine thousand four hundred eighty-seven dollars and fifty cents. What is that for again? They would advertise the position. First, the first thing they would do is interview mayor and council to see what you're wanting in a city manager. Then they would advertise the position, accept the applications, evaluate the applications, give a recommendation to council on ones to interview, not interview, or potentially interview. I think there's three different levels they consider. Then it would be council's decision to accept that, interview the ones they suggested or add or subtract anything to it. I see. And facilitation of candidates, interviews, fifteen hundred per day? How many days they anticipate they take? I would, what I would just ask, I would say you would target to have five interviews for the first interview. That could be done in one day. So if you decided to have them here, it'd be another fifteen hundred dollars. Any secondary interviews, I think could be handled in the house. So about twelve thousand dollars. And you had some guidelines, did you, as to what you expect them to, description of education requirements? They have that. We had a job description. They put, I think more information will come out of, they're coming here to interview mayor and council to determine what you are looking for in a candidate.
Along with, with the warranty guard?
All right. Throw the question?
When do you anticipate, would you anticipate to look?
I think if this was approved at these Monday night's meeting, we would sign the contract and send it over immediately. And the budget for this signing? We're gonna have to determine where the budget is for this. I have not talked to Lisa about that.
It's not in the budget, I hear.
Not yet.
She was talking about the...
But they want to restrict it after, like...
They're not, I don't know that they've got much time restricted.
We, before Monday night, we will have a idea of where the money can come from to present you.
Okay, thank you.
Lonnie, wanna talk a little bit about the paving projects? And I did send them a letter and I'm not sure if I told you that, but they are aware. We, I guess we're in my city manager update. They think they are aware that we're rebidding that paving.
Okay, the reason for the rebidding is we had several companies, well, three immediate companies that contacted me about the thickness of the asphalt and how much it can burn above the gutter, curb and gutter now. And so I talked to Jim and the mayor and also city attorney. And due to that fact, that the milling of the road was a big issue. If we just went with the edge milling that was in the bid contract, we would have ended up having a real high crown in the middle of the street that it just wouldn't have looked right, it wouldn't have worked right and all kinds of problems. So there, different companies have talked about the possibility of milling the whole road, milling at least six to eight feet from the curb out to the, toward the center of the road. It's really gonna have to be determined. They have said that some of the milling on some of these secondary streets especially, to get an inch and a half below the curb and some of them could possibly need to go six or eight inches down. So, you know, I have, I've been taking information that I've got and relating it to the city here. And so we've decided to withdraw the contract, the bid contract. We sent them an email, Lisa did, I made phone calls to make sure they got it. The companies seemed very appreciative that we were doing that. Nobody complained about withdrawing. I informed them that the streets would stay the same length, same width, everything stayed the same, but the new one would have some stipulations about milling and what we wanted and expected. So I contacted the DOT today, talked to one of their engineers that, and talked to them about how they decided about their depth and everything. And he said that the biggest thing was to go out and look at the curb and see what the height is, the average height, look at our utilities, like our valves, manholes, and see if we could determine how high that was around those utilities. And then maybe set a limit so that everybody will be bidding on the same bid of, say, four inches or whatever it is, or four inches plus the inch and a half or three inches plus the inch and a half below the curb. And then come back in and fill it back into the inch and a half that we were initially talking about. So this was just something that I was gonna bring back. I hadn't even talked to Jim and Mary and one about talking to the DOT today. This off-house after lunch. So this is something that I'd like information from mayor and Jim as far as how deep do we wanna go? We do need to set a depth to give the companies instructions as far as, you know, what we're gonna do about the milling. So that's, that's the main reason we pulled the bid package before opening day.
Fun of mine is we get a better job when it is completed and probably save money by not negotiating with a successful bidder to do additional milling. Keep it competitive.
Well, we had to do some edge milling extra. We, the city has not done any complete milling of streets or anything like that. The state came through on Fifty-three West Turner Street, a way to take, and they did some milling. But the city and the streets we've done, we've just edge milled some and it didn't amount to that much. So it's something we gotta, if we can get this settled and get it in next week's paper, then we should have an opening date and be ready to bring it before council at the next council meeting, a month from Monday. So it's just some stuff that we need to work out and make some decisions on the depth. And also had, was mentioned, you know, we've been put in a forty-five day deadline. Well, due to traffic control and the milling and everything, it's gonna take more time. And maybe move the forty-five to sixty days or something like that. That's a decision we have to make and then everything else will stay the same.
I think we do have the additional days. It's reasonable. Lonnie, did you ask them for what they recommend as far as the depth?
I did ask the ones that I talked to and they said that without coming up here and doing some, getting some thickness and things like that, they really couldn't say.
They were gonna pay about inch and a half, weren't they?
About an inch and a half, yes.
So were they not milling inch and a half?
Well, they mill an inch and a half, but to bring it level with the curb, it's higher than the curb now. Well, they'd mill an inch and a half, but to bring it level with the curb, it's higher than the curb now, some of the streets are. And so what, what I was thinking is just.
Not, not, not Main Street that's higher than the curb, Woodville Street's higher.
Woodville, yes, and let's see, I think there's one more that they named. But what I was thinking is take a tape measure and go up there and measure how much higher it is and then add that to the inch and a half. And then whenever we get done, it'd be flush with the curb. If anybody's got any suggestions.
Well, Main, Main Street's gonna be your biggest issue. And it's all fresh, freshly paved, a new curb back when it was done. So that should be easy to figure. Inch and a half down, bring it back inch and a half, and you got it. The Mark Woodfield, that's just gonna be some serious grinding to get it back down to where it looks right. We, we paved it last time, city crews did, and and we did not have the milling in place. We were just glad to get the potholes covered. So I'd look at that street and one of the street besides Woodfield.
I'd have to look at, I don't have.
Most of them are not curved. What are you gonna do, stegon?
Yes.
Okay, it's curved and I think it may be above in a lot, in a few areas.
Well, that's what I was thinking, is just check the ones that's above and measure how much above and add that to an inch and a half and put a limit on that so that
That'd be bought for.
Everybody would be bidding on the same thing.
And the product itself, are we gonna be able to keep that?
I'm putting that in the bid package. We would furnish trucks to haul it and retain the byproducts of the milling.
And a lot of that we would tend to use over on that lanching cord. As, as base.
It's a good cord, good, it's a good product, worth having.
And what we didn't use would go over to find your, to start a shop over. All right, I think that's really just for information, but wanted to get that out to mayor and council. Next one is very important. Got a proposal from Denson Heating and Air Conditioning to air condition the city manager's area. The gas heat in there, Denson came out and looked at it. Chief Roper walked through and made a comment that it was leaking. My nose did not notice that his did.
Did you need to find my fingerprints, did you?
I, I got great looking at that.
Whoa.
Yeah. Anyway, it is within my spending limit that I will requesting that council allow me to spend forty-four hundred dollars, round numbers, on two mini split units that would heat and cool the area.
Did they look at ducting it over there?
Yeah. My comfort, my certainly, you know, both of them are really important. In your package, you've got a presentation Ben Turpseed sent me on April twenty-fourth. It is a PowerPoint presentation that was made at GP Deputy Spring Conference by Jeff Jones, Cleveland County Water Authority. That is for your education, you know, hopefully understand some of the things that were, we've been talking about on water loss and such. Last item I've got on the agenda is discussion, any, is there any discussion concerning the comprehensive plan? All comments that were received have been sent to.
Mr. RC, RC, it's not RDC.
Are there any discussions? That is my agenda. Last items are those of interest to mayor and council. What discussion?
If you will condense what you see important in that that you went over, I, I try to put some agenda items next to your hot topics. You'll bring that closer for me and give that to Lisa and I may have one item or two, I don't know.
I, I will have budget.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, there's gonna be other items. Certainly will do the old business and new business. I'm not sure what might be sitting on the old business.
If we're real careful, we might not break any records with time.
I'll make no comment on that. Anything else?
Since our last meetings, I've been in every public restroom within two hundred miles of here. And I haven't been any molding privies yet, but based on the figures that we've been able to put together on public restrooms for the Rupp property. If they're freestanding, we keep looking, ranging from two hundred to three hundred dollars a square foot. And again, that's a contracted price, not a internal price, but I've done some designs on my own that could probably get it down to around sixty-four square feet.
You're talking about renovating the building or another building?
I'm talking about several freestanding. I do know that that was a mention for the doors we're giving apart. Some of the, I mean, these that we've received with this architectural firm are way too fancy, don't the country?
Well, I agree.
And there are two or three privy ones.
They're, they're spending a lot of money just the way they're treating them roofs and the little.
I said, I see that that, I think that's in Clayton County too. But you need about sixty-four square, square feet per ADA. So just, I don't know internally what we could do. Whether we want permanent, as in brick frame. I think that ultimately for that particular property, having a little bit better idea of what we'd be using it for would be nice. So that we could locate them where we never have to revise them.
Sure don't wanna build them and then move them.
I don't know if there's any money. I know there's some stuff on the comprehensive plan about developing that park and restroom. I think the total is fifty thousand. I think a bathroom would eat that up pretty quickly for a standing one.
Our original plan I thought was when we was gonna use a pro building to take down the structures that had been added over the years because it's not aesthetically pleasing. And we were gonna go in and divide the inside of the building and basically working with Commercial Interiors, which is Ken Pant and Don Bogus. They're gonna help us with some assistance as well as some guidelines, basically. But I had my, they're, they're world famous rebuilding Burger King bathrooms. So, well, at least United, at least Southeastern United States Bank. If they have the materials, they build the materials right here, the heavy duty commercial grade. And, but that seemed like it's gone by the board, but that was not gonna cost the numbers that we're talking now, but.
And Ken, do they have to go over there and look at those buildings to do that specific?
No, what we were gonna do is go in and make sure the asbestos wasn't gonna be an issue, was gonna cover most of it. And we were gonna tear off the floors, tile the floors, and use their materials for the partitions and et cetera and the, and the potties and et cetera and so. But that was the thought then, move forward and, but that, but it was gonna be a lot less than, I think it's gonna be affordable. What we're talking about here is almost outside our possibilities.
Well, some of the rest, you know, ball grounds are really quite simple. And, and they have them at the ball fields too, in our, our city park. They're simple. I think you could probably aesthetically improve that same kind of idea without adding a tremendous amount of expense depending on what we could do internally. I don't know if we have break licenses we can use or not. I know they've gotten really, really hard to come by, but or whether we want to just still tastefully done. I don't wanna use the word rusty, but if it's mirror in our architecture of our downtown area, you can make it look somewhat period and do it pretty simple. Can you, could you price something like that?
Sure.
Get a little bit. Two stalls or three at the most?
Yeah.
Is there any interest in possibility of a unisex?
That's what I was looking for, something for the kid, just to get babies, get diapers changed. I think it's a good idea.
I think at least one of them could.
No, I'm, I'm.
You're talking about just a single?
Single, single restroom.
Two would figure out what the.
There, we put a question mark on it.
Yeah.
What are you?
I think they call them.
Family.
Gender friendly?
Well, family restrooms or companion restrooms or, I've seen, I've seen a couple of different things.
Ladies, ma'am, you want chair restroom?
Babe has to at the house. All right, let me.
As long as there's a place to go, don't wear your clothes.
Just a family restroom.
Um, Jim, I'll be in the office in the morning if we can knock this out, the agenda.
Oh, yeah.
Are we done pretty much?
Anything else? Thank you.